Welcome to the Chisholm City Council Meeting, September 10th, 2025. Assistant, please take your call.
Yes. Commissioner Halla.
Present.
Commissioner Bunk.
Here.
Commissioner Vaki. Absent. Commissioner Gargi.
Present.
Commissioner Halverson.
Present.
Mayor Lance. Absent.
Thank you. We have a couple additions to the agenda, Council, tonight. First will be under me, under G, under Janet, it'll be Resolution Number 0925-77. Resign Resolution Number 0825-61. This is a request from Barrett Zimmer, Airport Authority. Number one, under me, number two, under me, will be under Resolution Number 0925-78, Airport Authority Levy. It sets the levy at eight hundred and twenty-one thousand instead of the previous Resolution Number 0825-61. That sets it at eight forty-five, two thirty-one. And we do have a change to the agenda as well. First change is the posting for the position of water sewer utility person will be posted simultaneously. The external position will be posted until October 10th, 2025. And then the next correction is Resolution Number 0925-73, on page thirty-seven. It should read CSAH, number sixty-seven, Second Avenue Northeast to Fifth Street Northeast. Memo, page fifty-four, and it should read, second meeting, as well, on eighty-three, ninety-three. Plus, data release request forms, Tiffany Larsen's name was spelled incorrectly, and the fax number for the Police Department analyst has been updated. With that, do a motion to adopt the agenda.
Good morning.
Second.
Motion by April, second by Jim. Any discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Period. Congratulations.
I am the Lieutenant, in the light of the United States of America, and to the Republican Republicans, one nation, number five, in the middle of the world, for the正义 and justice of our all.
Any public persuasion, April?
Thank you.
Council reports, we'll start with you, April.
Good evening. I got a couple, attended a joint council meeting with the Chisholm Hitting Airport Authority on Monday, August, maybe, what's that? I'm trying to recall what day it was, it was a month, eh? We had a working session on Wednesday, August 27th, that I also attended. I also want to let everybody know that September is library card signup, so if you don't have your library card, you should go down to the Chisholm Public Library and get your library card, because one card has endless possibilities, and that's the theme this year. So, also, the Minnesota Discovery Center, Saturday, September 13th, they're having a Swedish genealogy presentation, and it's free and open to the public, so, anybody's willing to go there, Saturday the 13th, it's free, my so, I'm down with genealogy, so, it's like a big thing, so, I'll be there. Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you, April. Jim?
Evening. Just a short report for the Fire Department meeting that we had last week. There was two resignations, Sheik Temple and Steve Burnett, and we had ten calls, if I recall right, last month, which was, they were all very happy with, and there was one or two anniversaries. I know Andrew, my son is at seven years, was there a second one?
Yeah, Steve.
Steve, oh yeah, Steve Burnett, thirty-two years, but he retired, so, that night, that's it.
Marty, good evening.
Evening. This is very short report, I attended the Chisholm Hitting Airport, Chisholm Hitting, and the Alley Public Hearing last weekend, and also today, and I must say, I'm kidding here, but the library mural looks awesome, that's really good, so, kudos, that's all I have.
Thanks, Marty. Oh yeah, I attended the Alley Meeting, Paris Meeting as well tonight, I attended the last Rams Meeting, our Council Working Session, we had the Council Airport Meeting, I had a Public Utilities Commission Meeting, an EDA Meeting, I joined by phone, and Mayor Lance and I went to the St. Faith Public Hearing over Virginia last week, I'm with Stephanie and Commissioner Vaki. Very heated discussion, five hundred people were plus there in attendance. This is a wake-up call for the area range. I'm very proud of all of our elected representatives that actually stood up and spoke up for the region, we need more people to speak up for the region as well. Public comments are open online, so, September 22nd, so I urge every one of you to get on there and comment about the MPCA, about the variance that HITAC has going on, and their permit process. It's super important, because this is, this will shut down the area range, we won't have jobs, we won't have budgets, we'll have nothing up here if we don't get this fixed right now. Politics aside, too, this is for the area range, 100%. And one thing, too, nine eleven is tomorrow as well, hope everybody remembers all the fallen firefighters and EMS and police. And last but least, we have another, Extreme Market, next Tuesday, three a.m., last one for the season. That's all I have. City Analyst, Campus Director, good evening.
Good evening, Airport.
Fire Chief, absent. City Police Chief.
I don't report tonight. I'm present.
City Building Official, Zoning Administrator, absent. City Engineer.
I have no report. But if you have any questions, they can ask, otherwise wait through my servants.
Public Works, Larry.
Just a quick one for everyone, with the changing seasons and stuff, reach out if we're missing something and that, and then with the weather forecast and of those changing seasons, this last weekend for the splash pad, and it looks to be almost eighty degrees, maybe eighty degrees if it's sunny, and so, last weekend for the splash pad, so get out there, the kids enjoy that, and we'll tidy it up for the winter next week, so, and then we'll be building the hockey rink at the new, with the new boards, while the boards that we reused from the arena down at the skate park there, so, looking forward to that for the winter.
Thanks, Larry. City Perks Trails Recreation Director, Colin.
Good evening, Council, I just had a quick one, too, so, flag football is, we just started on Monday of this past week, and registration is still open, I'm giving people some more time to still get registered, we had one this morning as well, so I just wanted to come out here and announce that to everyone, so, thanks, that's about it.
May register.
Yeah, it's on the city website, under the flag football page. Mm-hmm, yeah, okay.
Thanks, Colin.
Thank you.
Library Supervisor, absent. City Attorney.
Thank you, no formal report, I'd have these field questions if there are any.
Any question for Brian? No? Quick, Creator, Evan.
He needs to report.
Quick, thank you. City Administrator.
Good evening, just quick, city staff's been working hard on the budgeting process, we have our first budgeting council on Monday, so we will present our preliminary budget to the council then, and yeah, and that's what we're really working on right now.
Any question for seventy? Okay, moving on. Okay, entertain motion to, for the consent agenda, which includes list of bills, communication, resignation from Chisholm Fire Department, resignation from Chisholm Police, Library U. Staff, May 13th, 2025 Library Board Meeting Minutes, June 16th, 2025 CHA Meeting Minutes, July 8th, 2025 Police Commission Meeting Minutes, July 23rd, 2025 PUC Meeting Minutes, St. Paul and Minnesota Foundation Thank You Letter, Chisholm Community Foundation Thank You Letter, minutes from previous City Council meetings, August 13th, 2025 Regular Meeting Minutes, August 25th, 2025 Airport Meeting Minutes, August 27th, 2025 Working Session Meeting Minutes, and payroll overtime. Do you have a motion? Motion. Motion by Jim?
Second.
Second by Marty, any discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. We have an unfinished business. None, two business. Campus Director Tiffany.
Good evening, I did not print out what number this is that I'm asking you to approve on the memo, so, I am requesting approval of a change order for our new ambulance, too, this is the ambulance that we ordered last year, it should come next spring. After all the changes, I included the change order, after all the changes, it comes out to us saving seven hundred and fifty dollars. Yeah, thank you, if there's any questions on any of what the yes and no's mean, I'm happy to answer those.
I have a question.
Yes.
It's a no that you checked here.
Sure.
The module executed compartments, what is, what?
What number are you at?
First page, anyway, yeah.
First page, number eight. That, what I marked a no on is three hundred dollars to add two upright backboard seatbelts. We have those seatbelts on the other side. They are most commonly utilized for strapping down a cardiac monitor during transport, as it is, unless of an MCI, we don't transport more than one patient at a time, so cost versus value, I wasn't.
Okay.
I'm happy to change that if you'd like, but...
That's what I was curious about, that's what I wanted, so...
We do have those on the other side of the ambulance, so we can still transport two lying down and three sitting, if we need.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, thank you for asking.
Council, any other questions?
Make them motions, Mayor.
Motion by April, support, support by Jim, any more discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Police Chief.
Good evening, Council President, hello, and City Council, just informational, this go around, some more raffles, August 19th, the Gambling Commission approved three separate, or two separate raffling events in town, should be right in front of you there, and then on September 2nd, the Gambling Commission also approved three other additional raffles and bingos throughout, throughout the city, so, if there's any questions, I can answer them, otherwise, that's all I have.
Council, any questions? Thanks, Jim. Jim Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the Council, if you'll turn to page thirty-six and thirty-seven, I will start with page thirty-seven, that was one of the corrections that Mayor mentioned, if you go down to the third, whereas, talking about the Heritage Manor Infrastructure Replacement Project, that should be from Cassa 67, which is also Second Avenue Northeast, to Fifth Street Northeast, there on the north and the east side, if you will, of Heritage Manor, so just a correction there. And then, what you have before you is the Resolution authorizing the City Administrator to apply to IRRB for infrastructure funding in the amount of six hundred thousand dollars, as you see on page thirty-six, the total estimated cost of the project is right now two, about two and a quarter million dollars, and our request is for six hundred thousand dollars, so, with that, I would be happy to answer any questions that you might have, but would recommend approval of Resolution 0925-73, thank you.
Hey, Council, any questions for Jim? Could you go over the, the streets again? I, I didn't...
It's Sixth Street Northeast, Jim, on the north side of, starting at County Road 67, yeah, Sixth Street Northeast, right there on the north side of, oh, I'm sorry, what you're asking me?
Yeah.
It's the Heritage Manor area, it's on Sixth Street Northeast from Cassa 67, over to Fourth Avenue, and then down Fourth Avenue to the intersection with Fifth Street, right there at the southeast corner of Heritage Manor.
Okay, all right, thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve that. Your motion by Jim?
Second.
Second by April, any more discussion on Resolution Number 0925-73, authorizing application IRRB for funding Heritage Manor area? All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you, Mayor, then if you'll turn to page thirty-eight and following, we have change order number one for the Ice Arena and the Curling Club interior improvements, and tonight we have Nate Shoniker, who's with Inbuilt, the construction general manager, contractor, on this project, Nate, if you'd give us an update, and maybe quick take us through the change order, please?
Sure. It's all ready, Nate. Yeah, thank you.
Good evening, so my name is Nathan Shoniker with Inbuilt, we are the construction manager on the Ice Arena, so we are requesting a change order of seventy-nine thousand, three hundred ninety-four dollars and seventy cents. With this change order, it takes into account the soil corrections at the curling rink, as well as the sports center. We encountered, I guess, a bunch of, I guess, we call frost mitigation, there's a lot of frost under the old slab that we ended up taking out, as well as, you know, clay soils that were wet and unsuitable for recompaction. During those, I guess, excavation of those soils, we encountered a lot of boulders while the excavation, so, you know, one of them, we call it a Volkswagen, it was the size of a Volkswagen, literally, so, during that process, I know, you know, typically, the way we go about is ask for a change order ahead of getting the work done, or, you know, asking for money before we go ahead with the work. I am taking over the project for another PM from Inbuilt, during that process, I was able to collect this information, get it over to Stephanie and Jim, so this is basically the cost to do the work, you know, after work is completed, so, this takes into account the fifty thousand dollars that we had set aside as a credit towards this, this change order. We did expect, you know, fifty thousand dollars to about a hundred thousand dollars, you know, for these soil corrections, but as we got into it, you know, obviously taking the slab up and out of place, you know, seeing that we ran into frost, you know, there's mitigations that we have to go through for that, as well as the soil corrections, so, all this is actual, I guess, time and materials that went into the project, so this is actual cost from doing the work. The other thing is with the timing of the arena, we were anticipating October 15th, that was kind of what was being communicated before I came on board, when I came on board to take over for the other PM, I went through the schedule, met with the subs, kind of came up with where the schedule would end up, and right now, we're tracking for November 7th for it to be completed, that's been kind of the current goal for the last three weeks, I've been updating Jim and Stephanie, as well as others, as to where that substantial completion date is going. Tomorrow, we do have the slab getting poured for the arena, so therefore, going forward, it's just more or less getting the refrigeration lines over from the arena down to the curling club, we're working with the asphalt contractor on that project as well, to get that arena paved at the same time, so, as of right now, November 7th is our best estimated completion date, it may improve, or it may take a week beyond that, as we get closer, but we'll, we'll keep everybody in loop as we get closer to those, to turning that arena over.
Do you want to just tell them that the curling floor is...
Oh, yes, curling club floor is poured, we got one more week of cure time, so, with these slabs, they cull off for fourteen days of wet cure, that's basically putting a wet blanket or poly with water on it, basically cures out the floor, and then there's fourteen more days of dry cure, so you pull the poly, the, the water lines off of it, and then you allow it to cure out, you know, with the open air, but we did achieve about six thousand PSI with the curling club, so we're way above our strength there, so, it's actually a very nice floor, so, we're anticipating the same thing with the other one.
Sure, yes.
Any questions?
Is the, the later date due to this, actually, do?
Yeah, so the soil corrections, that took about, I would say about four weeks, shy of four weeks, you know, we were anticipating October 15th, you know, we're three weeks past that, so, you know, I would say we're doing pretty good, considering that we lost basically a month to the soil corrections, you know, it was just a lot of work that we weren't able to accomplish while trying to get this stuff done at the same time, so...
How much frost did it dump in there?
I want to say it was about a foot, I could be wrong, but I want to say it was about a foot.
Okay.
So, with the new system, it actually heats the, the subsoil below that, whereas the one before that didn't heat the subfloor below it, which, that's why we had the frost, we took it out.
Okay.
Yeah.
Council, entertain motion to change order number one for the Ice Arena?
I have a question.
Yeah.
What, in your detailed list here?
Yep.
Talks about labor and any equipment and tools?
Mm-hmm.
So did you specifically have to buy different equipment and tools?
No, it's, so typically, as a subcontractor, you have tools and equipment that you're paying for, so if they, going by, by like a, a skid loader, they're depreciating that, and they're writing off that cost to other jobs, because the jobs have to pay for that piece of equipment.
Usually on an hourly basis, it's a standard rates.
Yep.
Thank you so much. Do we have money in the budget for this? Thank you. No, that's the only budget, so we'll have to...
Okay. Okay, sorry.
Fifty thousand budget for that.
Hey, Council, entertain motion for change order number one for the Ice Arena? Motion. Motion by Jim?
Second.
Second by Marty, all's in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the Council, and then, next time, if you'll turn to page forty-four, forty-five, and forty-six, we have pay application number ten for the sports arena, and if you'll turn to page forty-seven, again, going over to column E, where you'll see the major work completed during this last month, again, was the refrigeration system primarily, along with the sports arena floor and the curling rink floor, as well as the dehumidification systems, total work completed during that period, as you see at the bottom of that column, is four hundred and forty-one thousand, one hundred and sixty-seven dollars and three cents, of which we'll be paying ninety-five percent, retaining five percent of that. Going over to column G, you see that the total work completed to date amounts to four million, one hundred and seventy-one thousand, six hundred and sixty-nine dollars and fifty cents, which puts us right at the seventy-five percent completion date, and you see in the last column, then, the retainage to date of a hundred and eighty-eight thousand, two hundred and sixty-nine dollars and eighty-one cents. Such that if you go back then to page forty-five, you'll see the original contract being five million, five hundred and fifty-three thousand, six hundred and forty-five dollars, going down that same number, and item number four, the amount completed being in the four million, one hundred and seventy-one thousand, six hundred and sixty-nine dollars and fifty cents, that seventy-five percent mark, below that, you see the retainage to date of a hundred and eighty-eight thousand, nearly two hundred and seventy dollars, such that the total earned to date, less that retainage, is three million, nine hundred and eighty-three thousand, three hundred and ninety-nine dollars and sixty-nine cents, previous payments of three point five six four point three million dollars, such that the current payment due is the four hundred and nineteen thousand, one hundred and eight dollars and sixty-eight cents, which is that ninety-five percent of that work completed last month of four hundred and forty-one thousand dollars, and the balance to finish at this point is just over one point five million dollars. With that, I would be happy to answer, try and answer, along with Nate, any questions that you might have, but would recommend approval of pay application number ten, in the amount of four hundred and nineteen thousand, one hundred and eight dollars and sixty-eight cents.
Okay, Council, any questions for Jim? Looking for motion for pay application number ten, in amount of four hundred and nineteen thousand, one hundred and eight dollars and sixty-eight cents, do you have a motion?
I'll make one.
Motion by Marty.
Support.
Support by Jim. Any more discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you, Mayor, and then if you'll turn to page forty-eight, we have the proposal from JPJ Construction for Construction Services at our Ice Arena, driveway and parking lot improvement project, we held the pre-construction conference on that last week, and they're looking at moving in, in approximately a week and a half, begin that construction with a completion date of October 15th, and what we have before us is a proposal from JPJ for construction and management or administration staking, and for observation on the project, with an estimated fee total of fifteen thousand, seven hundred and twenty dollars, to be built on an hourly basis for the actual work actually performed. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have, but would recommend approval of that proposal.
Any questions? Motion?
Motion by April.
Second.
Second by Marty, any more discussion? Jim, do you know who's going to be here in column for JPJ for this?
Billy Koppenen, who was on our project last year on Fifth Street South, at least he was the representative that was attending the pre-construction with John Jamnick.
Oh, yeah, okay. Did the, do you agree to make it into the...
Yes, yeah, I got a cost, that'll come to you at the next council meeting, a change order for that, Marty.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any more discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you, Mayor, and then if you'll turn to page fifty-two, we have Resolution 0925-74, approving the plans and specs and authorizing the bid for the Alley Reconditioning Project. We held the informational hearing a week ago tonight, and tonight, before the council meeting at five o'clock, we held the formal public hearing on that project, we've heard no objections to the thirteen blocks that are proposed, none of those blocks were ones that were excluded here when we did the 2024 project, so with that, what we are proposing is to approve the plans and specification, and authorize the bidding of that project, we're looking at receiving bids Wednesday, October 1st, and bring in the Council for your review and hopeful approval at your October meeting, so with that, I would be happy to answer any questions that you might have, but would recommend approval of Resolution Number 0925-74.
Okay, Council, looking for motion for support of Resolution Number 0925-74, approval of plans and specs and authorization to bid the 2025 Alley Reconditioning Project.
I have a question, Jim.
Sure.
With October 2nd being the bid date, this is going to probably go on next year, right? More likely?
What, originally, when we did the feasibility study, we were looking at trying to complete it this year, but with fall fast approaching, it appears, and also, as you well know, this time of the year, trying to get a concrete contractor or a bitumen contractor becomes very iffy, and you're paying a premium price, and so we had a discussion with staff, and decided, or are recommending that we make a completion date by June 30th of next year, such that if a contractor has an opening and wants to do all or part of it this fall, they certainly can, if all or part of it has to wait till next spring, that's fine, just so we can take advantage of the pricing of it. And Stephanie has indicated that, you know, there may be another street reconditioning project next spring, if that, if our contractor doesn't complete on this project, doesn't complete it this fall, we'll try and bid that very early next year, so we can hopefully take advantage of that same contractor and save mobilization cost, that they could be doing it at the same time, is our thinking, anyway, our recommendation at this point.
I'll make a motion. Motion by Jim?
Second.
Second by Marty, I have one thing, Jim.
Yes, sir.
So were we talking about tying this in with the Ice Arena Parking Lot, too?
No, that's, that's bid completely separate, because that has October 15th completion date.
Okay.
We're looking at that, that's the same contractor who was on our school project, TMT Construction out of Grand Rapids, like I said, we held the pre-con, last, pre-construction conference last Wednesday, they're looking, they needed to wait till the refrigeration piping got out of our way, but they're right now planning to move in by September 22nd, Uh but they're right now planning to move in uh by uh September twenty-second, a week and a half from now. And they are, by their schedule, they are proposed to be done by October fifteenth.
Okay, council, any more discussion? All is a favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you, mayor members of the council. Then if you'll turn to page fifty-four and fifty-five, um this is setting the assessment hearing uh actually in advance of next uh of your council meeting in two weeks. Uh this is for the street reconditioning project, which was our fourth street northwest project as well as Seventh Avenue Northwest project. And what you have before you is resolution oh nine twenty-five dash seventy-five, setting the assessment hearing uh for that project. As you see, the total cost of the project, if you go over to the resolution, is a hundred and ninety-three thousand, nine hundred and seventy-one dollars and thirty-two cents, of which sixty-three thousand, eleven dollars is getting assessed to the adjacent and benefiting property owners with uh the city's uh remaining cost being a hundred and thirty thousand, nine hundred and sixty dollars and thirty-two cents. And we hope to get this approved such that it gets certified to the county by the end of the year for the first payments due next year. With that, I would be happy to answer any questions that you might have, but would recommend approval of resolution number oh nine twenty-five dash seventy-five.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by April. Support. Support for Jim.
I do have a question. Uh I've been called by everybody Fifth Street Southwest, but a couple of blocks that aren't done. Is is that gonna be on the agenda? For the next year or years from now?
What?
What the schools read, you know?
The portion that is undone, right behind the school?
Yeah.
Is the school's contractor. Schools contract and contractor. Our contractor, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Jim.
I mean, the 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 completion of Fifth Street there.
Oh, the the following?
Keep going.
Oh, west of Fourth over the the frontage road?
I've been called by every person that lives there. A couple of blocks, so.
That's a that's a matter of prioritization. Actually, uh that Fifth Street project, when we did the project in twenty twenty-four on the south southeast portion, uh at one point, we were proposing to do that whole stretch in one phase. Now, because of funding and so forth, it's been broken up into three phases. Uh just where, funding is gonna be the big question as to how soon we can get that done, Jim, quite frankly.
It won't be next year.
Okay.
Looks like next year. Right now, our priority is Heritage Manor. If we can get the funding to to do that. Uh we've got Wenton addition, uh all utilities really along Fifth Street Northwest to get to the Wenton addition as well is a high priority for us. And that would soon be up in that top three or four projects. So it's a matter of prioritization by you, the council.
Do you have a motion? Second, any more discussion? All is a favor?
Aye, aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carried.
And then if you'll turn to page fifty-seven, please, we have pay application number four for the Fifth Street Southwest project. And I'm extremely pleased to announce that it got paved uh before our substantial completion date, before school opened. Uh the sodding contractor was right in there then last Tuesday and Wednesday and got all the sodding done. It looks extremely good. Talk about timely by getting the sod down and having rain every day continuously since then. Uh but it looks extremely good, uh with the exception of that portion immediately behind the school, that's part of the schools contractor and so forth that we haven't seen for two weeks in there. So ours looks extremely good and we're extremely proud of it. We we were blessed. I'll go. I'll leave it that.
Even the extra, I haven't driven down there, so the extra uh soil or the grass that was needed for the people's houses, that all got done?
Mm hmm. Okay. Everything within that ju- that two blocks, Jim, including back on private property?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's all completely done. It was all completely done by about mid-afternoon last Wednesday. So uh with that, you have pay application uh number five, excuse me, pay application number four for that project, which includes the bituminous, but uh it does not include the sodding yet. Really, the only thing left, uh we've got a few punchless items, some of which will be done this fall. Uh the rest uh may have to wait till next spring. But there are two sanitary sewer laterals on private property that we were not able to replace the pipe. They're under porches, under part of the structure of the house that have to be lined, and those two are still left to be done as soon as we can get that subcontractor in there and do that. But everything is operational and um so with that, I would recommend uh approval of pay application number four in the amount of three hundred and fifty-seven thousand, seven hundred and seventy-three dollars and eighty cents. As you see on page fifty-seven and then in the detail that follows it, um total work completed that period was three hundred and seventy-six thousand, six hundred and four dollars, again, of which we paid ninety-five percent and hold an additional eighteen thousand, eight hundred and thirty-two dollars and twenty cents, five percent retainage uh as well. So with that, I would recommend approval of pay application number four in that amount.
Okay, council, looking for motion for pay application number four for Fifth Street Southwest infrastructure, infrastructure improvement project in amount of three hundred and fifty-seven thousand, seven hundred and seventy-three dollars and eighty cents. Motion. Motion by Jim?
Second.
Second by Marty. Any more discussion? All is a favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you. Thank you.
Larry.
All right. If we could go to page sixty-eight. Um as expected, and council approved at the last meeting, we had one internal candidate and um for the water sewer or the water distribution lead. Um and then we would be asking to make that formal. Um we would ask the council to uh approve resolution number zero nine two-five dash two-seven, appointing Ryan Lubers to the water distribution lead.
Okay, council, looking for motion for resolution number nine, zero nine two-five dash seven-six, appoint Ryan Lubers to water distribution. Motion by Jim. Second by April. Any more discussion? All is a favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you. And then that, that, as we talked about in depth and length last meeting, that creates the open position for an entry level position, water sewer utility person. And um sort of supported by council last last meeting. And I did want to um, I did want to say that uh that I spoke with employees, of course, the next day, and uh everyone thanks the council for the support and understanding um why we why we request that little bit of overlap in employment. And um and um the I did want to say that the employees um made a um uh a gesture or a um goodwill offering that they will, we will really, you know, watch the budget and know, not that we spend unnecessarily, but every every purchase will be scrutinized and and um, you know, to support, you know, just the extra cost uh for the utility, for the rate payer. So we'll keep, we'll keep all the rates in mind. You know, we won't be jumping the rates uh because of this. So um with that, I would ask for council's support to post internally and externally um for the water sewer utility person.
Okay, council, looking for motion to post internally externally for the water sewer utility person.
I have a question for Larry.
Please.
Um is it normally internal and external at the beginning?
Um in in positions where we don't think that there's an internal candidate, but you always have to in uh give the union uh membership that that um that um chance, I guess. So. Yeah, so so and then, you know, maybe another um area, maybe when there's um, maybe if there's four people in one position and it's gonna wait a month, we will go in for internal first, take our time, then go external. But in in um, it is more expedient when we don't really think that there's an internal candidate. So it's more of a, it's more formal just to do it.
But we do, we do post internally for like Saturday or something like that.
Exactly.
External.
Yeah, and if someone, uh internal candidate was to come forward and qualify, that would, that would extinguish the the external. Yeah.
Okay, looking for a motion, council. Motion. Motion by Jim. Second by April, sorry.
So um so the question I had uh was whether or not we have a consent, because technically our union contract requires that we post internally first. And I understand it was a common practice. What we may want to do, though, is just get an official comment from the union that they consent to us going.
I'm sorry if it's not stated. The union did um agree. Yeah. I'm saying may, I I probably did miss that in the um agenda. Good catch, right?
No worries. As long as that's, as long as that's the case, I'm good.
Okay, thank you.
Do you need to change the motion?
No.
Okay. Motion is seconded. Any more discussion?
I got one question. I was just gonna affect your budget for next year, like number wise.
Yeah, so we um with the commitment of the employees and some of the um some of the things that we're looking at that we can actually save a little bit more money by having just a little bit of employee overlap, it it should be a wash. Yeah, yeah. I don't expect a raise to the ratepayers or utility payers because of this. Yeah, there there are, you know, so there are some increase, you know, that we do have a retiree, so there are some retiree payouts and stuff that affect the budget a little bit, but not because of this. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Well, I'll make up the difference.
All is a favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you. And then finally, uh with that is to appoint the uh hiring committee and um Mandy Gally offered um to help. And she's been good in the pa- great in the past helping us, and she does, would work hand in hand with this person quite a bit. And then, of course, myself and um uh sometimes we do bring in somebody from the union membership, you know, somebody in that role or somebody supporting that role. So Chris Mann or uh sewer lead that would work um with this person also volunteered. So I would, that would be my recommendation unless there's somebody jumping, you know, forward or, sorry? Oh, please. Administrator Scraba is always welcome. Usually just not able, usually not able.
Okay, council, looking for motion to appoint water sewer utility person hiring committee, which would consist of Minister Scraba, new official Mandy Gally, sewer lead Chris Mann, and Larry. Motion. Motion by Jim?
Second.
Second by Marty. Any more discussion? All is a favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Colin.
Hello again. Uh so I'm just here requesting to hire Skylar Appleman for the position as the youth flag football coordinator slash coach. Pending contingencies, Skylar is new to the position, but not new to the city or working with youth. He played flag football and tackle football for the city of Chisholm here. Uh Skylar helped rep for flag football games in the past as well. And uh also played a couple, uh repped a couple of games for JV football too. So the position is a lump sum of seven hundred dollars for the season. Uh I strongly recommend the hiring of Skylar Appleman for the position begins in the third week in September and lasts for four weeks.
Okay. Council looking for motion to approve hire of Skylar Appleman as flag football coordinator.
Make that motion.
Motion by April. Support. Support by Jim. Any more discussion? All is a favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Not so fast. This is not important. What do you think about the Gophers football game?
Which one? The Buffalo one or the one that was?
Sixty-six to, or yeah.
I I felt bad for the other team that they had to play a, you know, a Big Ten school. Um and what, they were like an FCS school, weren't they? Yeah. But I'm sure the Gophers paid them a lot of money to play them and make them look good. So, yeah. I'm not a big, big, I'm not huge on the Gopher football as I am the hockey program, so I'll say that. So. But, yeah. Yeah.
Okay, that's it.
Any other sports questions while I'm up here? All right, sounds good. Thank you, guys.
Mr. Scraba.
Good evening. Um yeah, first item I have on the agenda is a change order to American Wrap Company. Um which is, it's for eight hundred and forty-three dollars for the purchase or replacement of true drain inlets and catch basins. Basically, we just want to replace two of our up there. On the pump track. I thought Colin probably should have taken this item. I'm thinking about it, but.
Okay, council, looking for motion to support change order number two for American Wrap change in amount of eight hundred and forty-three dollars.
Has this already been done?
Yes.
All right, motion.
We could probably take it out.
I'll second.
Second by Marty. Any more discussion? All is a favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
The next item we have is um the quote from Bugalsen Sons for the Redhead Trailhead. This is um to move the equip, so there's old mining equipment that will be moved over to the trailhead. This is just the, to to move that from Bugalsen Sons. So thirteen thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. We have it already to go. We're just waiting for your final approval on that. It is within the budget.
Where's it gonna get moved to?
To the trailhead. There's not a lot of room up there, is there? Coordinator of his designers there are.
Okay, so.
Is that what they put the new slabs in for?
No.
Oh, that, oh.
No.
Okay, all right.
Okay, council, looking for motion to support Redhead Trailhead quote from Bugalsen in amount of thirteen thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars.
What if we just left it there? Left it there. Wherever it is. Then we still have it at the trailhead. That's your decision to make.
Do a motion? Motion going second? Do a third motion.
Is this for the Redhead or for the pump guy?
It's for the trailhead. Those are the designers.
So the Redhead. Last call.
Is there any questions that you have?
If it's for the Redhead, I'm gonna vote no board it. It's super paying work, so.
Are we paying more?
Or does it come out of that fund that I can't announce?
It's a, it's a grant. Um so it isn't a grant, which Marty, I don't know if you wanna elaborate anymore on this. So this has been, this has been within the process, the planning process that we've had for the trailhead for the past year and a half, or so that committees are meeting. Um there are grants that are LCCMR and IRRR that funded the trailhead and trails that were built. The project is a bit over budget at this point, so there are some cuts that have to happen. Um the committee did not identify this as one of the cuts, but the council doesn't support it.
You have a motion to move on?
Next item I have on the agenda is, um we've been working with Ravina on the data release requests updated. So um this is both for data subjects one and one and for public. So basically, we're just looking for approval on this new policy, which has gone through our department heads. The one change that Jed had uh mentioned is on page eighty-nine, Tiffany's name lifts the wire, so that will be um. I know, we've looked at it so many times that it feels like it's one of those things, but you know, Jim cut it for us. I'll make that motion. Thank you.
Yeah, motion by April. Support. Seconded by Marty. Any more discussion? All is a favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye, opposed? Motion carried.
And the next one is for the data practice policy for the public. So we're looking for support for that.
Okay, council, looking for motion to support the data release request for public.
Make that motion.
Support. Motion by April, second by Jim. Any discussion? All is a favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Your next G under me. Um this will be the airport authority uh resol- looking for motion to support resolution number oh nine two-five dash seven-seven rescind the resolution number oh eight two-five dash six-one. Uh it's a request from the airport authority director. Um it's to, so our previous meeting, we had voted for the levy in amount of eight forty-five, two thirty, sorry, enter forty-five thousand, two hundred and thirty-one dollars. Um giving, did. Hiving did not vote for that on their side of the meeting, so they went to zero percent levy. So the airport, so, sorry, the first resolution is rescinding our original levy allowance.
Who made that motion? Who seconded it?
What?
It does not have to be the same. Because this is a new resolution, should we send it? Correct?
Correct. So the, so this, basically what this mo, what this resolution it does is it formalizes that we're wiping out that old motion, that old action, and then the subsequent resolution will be replacing it with an updated so that all the numbers match across the communities.
Motion by April.
Well, second.
Second by Marty. Any more discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Next up will be resolution number oh nine two-five dash seven-eight, airport authority levy. This will set their levy at eight hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars instead of the previous resolution number of oh eight two-five dash six-one that sets it at, that was at eight forty-five two thirty-one, which is not rescinded.
Motion.
Motion by April. Support. Support by Jim. Any discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Anything under miscellaneous? Here we go. Motion. Motion by Jim.
Second.
Second by Marty. Any more discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, everybody.